Good evening. Welcome to the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up tonight, I have a proclamation in recognition of Flood Awareness Month. We actually have a couple of staff members here, Zach Henson from our Storm Water Management Office and Travis Small from Transportation Engineering, who are going to talk to us a little bit more about this, but first I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then invite them up to give us a little bit of a presentation. Whereas historically, the greatest number of flood disasters in Oklahoma have occurred during the month of May, and whereas flooding causes billions of dollars in property damages and numerous deaths each year in the United States, and losses due to flooding are not covered under most homeowners or business policies, and whereas it's never safe to drive into dangerous floodwaters and residents must be prepared with various flood safety procedures, and whereas the city of Stillwater is a participating community in the National Flood Insurance Program and is required to regulate floodplain development in partnership with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, the Oklahoma Insurance Department, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Oklahoma Emergency Management, Stillwater Emergency Management Agency, the Oklahoma Municipal League, Oklahoma Legislature, Association of County Commissioners of Oklahoma, Oklahoma Emergency Managers Association, and the Oklahoma Floodplain Managers Association to promote the beneficial uses and natural functions of the floodplain. And whereas the NFIP allows residents of participating communities to purchase affordable flood insurance in exchange for regulating floodplain development, and whereas it's important for Stillwater residents to be informed about the existence of the NFIP and the various personal benefits provided through the participation in the program. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby declare May 2024 as Flood Awareness Month in the City of Stillwater. Given that we got about two and a half inches of rain in like six hours last night, this is a very timely proclamation, and Zach and Travis, if you want to tell us a little bit more.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Zach Henson, the Watershed Quality Manager, as well as the Floodplain Administrator for the City of Stillwater. We appreciate the opportunity to get up and bring a little bit of awareness for floodplain and the hazards associated with those floodplanes. It's a little relevant considering the fact that, like you just said, we did have some flash flooding throughout the city last night. Just a few things I'd like to point out is that when you live in a floodplain, most people are aware of that, but you do not have to live within a FEMA regulatory floodplain to receive flood damage during these large events. So flash flooding is a big hazard, and it doesn't matter if you live in a flood zone or not. Flood insurance is available to any resident within the City of Stillwater through the National Flood Insurance Program, and in fact, in 2019, the last time we had major flooding in our city, the state NFIP coordinator communicated to me that roughly 70% of all of the flood damage claims that were submitted to FEMA occurred outside of a FEMA regulatory floodplain. So it's very important to be aware of the risk. So for anybody that lives within Stillwater, or if you're looking to purchase a new property, or if you've owned a property and you're just not sure, I encourage you to contact us at any point in time. We'd be more than happy to take a look at your hazard, any hazards that you may have with the property, look at the drainage patterns of your neighborhoods, et cetera, provide you with a little bit of reports and maps that show what your potential hazards may be. So with that, we've got Travis here with the Engineering Department, and he's got a few more words.
Thanks, Zach. Council, mayor, city manager, Travis Small with Engineering Department. I'd like to now bring up a slide. Hopefully y'all can see this. So I am part of OFMA, the Oklahoma Floodplain Managers Association, and OFMA every year sponsors a Turn Around, Don't Drown poster competition, and it's sent out to third and fifth grade, third through fifth graders throughout the state of Oklahoma. And this year, we had a student right here in Stillwater at Will Rogers Elementary that participated, and she's a fifth grader, Danya Elkonbar. She unfortunately is not here tonight, but her teacher, Myla Stevens, Ms. Stevens, if you'd come up. But anyway, OFMA participates in this every year and tries to get kids involved so that they can teach kids and the public in general about the hazards of driving into floodwaters. So I am a representative of OFMA, I'm actually the Region 5 representative, and Payne County and Stillwater is in Region 5. Region 5 had the largest turnout to this competition to date for this particular competition. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Stevens now and let her say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm proud of Danya. I think she did a great job on this, and I just wanted to thank the Floodplain Managers Association for the opportunity to participate in contests like this. When we started talking about this in my classroom, Turn Around, Don't Drown, especially someone like Danya, she's from Saudi Arabia, and she's actually back home right now, so she doesn't really understand, what is Turn Around, Don't Drown? So getting that full concept in a city like Stillwater, you would think that would be a little more important to us. But she loved this and was like, well, what does it look like? We really had to have these deep conversations about what flooding was, and you know, as fifth graders, you're not very aware of like your own dangers in the world yet. So the international awareness that we're bringing to the Turn Around, Don't Drown campaign is really phenomenal, and it actually really ties into science standards, which is one of my passions as well, where we learn all about the hydrosphere and water and how it cycles around the world and everything like that. So thank you guys for having this and declaring May this awesome month of flood awareness. Appreciate you guys.
And that particular poster will be presented in a calendar next year, OFMA's calendar next year, along with 12 other students that presented theirs. So I'm real happy to hear that Danya will be in that calendar.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on that board and floodplain management as well with Zach, and congratulations, Ms. Stevens, and to Danya as well on really actually impressive artwork.
I thought it was a coloring page at first, because she drew that. That's amazing.
Really good. We'll do a quick picture with our proclamation. Questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
With a motion and a second on consent, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to public hearings, and before we get started there, I'm going to ask Kristi Kluck to come up and tell us a little bit about our public hearing tonight and some of our budget issues.
Good evening, mayor and council, Kristi Kluck, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. And with regards to the budget, public hearing, staff does not feel that the public notice published in the local newspaper is sufficient and meets the intent of transparency to our citizens. And so for that reason, we are requesting to defer that public hearing to June 3rd. The public notice is currently available on our website, and it will be published again in a more transparent format in the Stillwater News Press on Saturday, May 25th, and Saturday, June 1st.
All right. Well, we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. As always, you can go to the website at stillwaterok.gov and see all of our budget documents for the upcoming fiscal year, and be prepared in a couple of weeks to come back and provide public comment on those. All right, item B under item seven is one of our dilapidated property matters. This is pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 638 East 14th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, owned by David and Brenda Sorenson, is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned as defined in 11OS Section 22-112.4(e). The City Council shall make a determination as to whether said building is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined by the referenced statutes and whether the order of abatement or removal of said structure and the assessment of associated costs thereof to the owners of said property. And Beth Ann Childs, our special counsel for these projects, is here.
Thank you, mayor. These probably are all going to sound familiar to you, they were all presented to you last year. Due to the transition in government, we really hated to put the deputy city manager in the position of having to, you know, move forward with a lot of these. We thought it was probably a good idea to renotice and give these individuals the opportunity to come back. You may remember that the way we handle these is through a written official record. Instead of creating a whole new record, basically what we're doing is we're doing an amendment or a supplement, which you have all been provided, that contains photographs, updated information from the treasurer and the assessor. We did have an opportunity to visit with Mr. Sorenson before the meeting today. He is here. He may want to come up and say a few words, except that he did tell me that he got some assistance today, and they got in there and made some pretty good headway with regard to the bushes and things surrounding the building. However, it's staff's position that because this has been going on for quite some period of time, we are requesting, once you get to the resolution portion, that you go ahead and approve that. That will give him 90 days to get everything done, once hopefully that will be accomplished. He's indicated to me that he did, he is changing positions, and so he believes that will give him a little bit more time to get this done. But what I can tell you definitively is that it will be the recommendation to the city manager that the structure be demolished if it isn't taken care of. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? I guess I'll open a public hearing at this point, and if Mr. Sorenson would like to speak on the issue, he's welcome to, or anyone else who is here to speak on behalf of this item?
I just came from over there. I apologize, I just came from there, I'm pretty, we had some neighbors actually help me, and I've actually got a Mr. Cool Generation 4 heat pump system inside ready to install, about a $5,000 system, and a new 200 amp breaker panel, and I talked to Randy Wilson, electrician, last night, so, yeah, I was working Campbell's, they were killing me about 60 hours a week, so I told them I gotta quit and take care of this, so I apologize for not getting it done, but we'll jump on it.
Do you feel like the 90-day timeframe will be?
Yeah, it'll get me going. Yeah, this house was a CE donor, moved it there in 1942 from where the high school is now, it was a two-room house, and it's been added on to four times, and I put a second floor on it, and so it'll be a four-bedroom, two-bath when it's done, so, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, any questions?
So the 90-day issue, if it's not ready to go in 90 days, we can demolish it, correct?
Yes. The resolution, I've never met a resolution I didn't like, particularly the recitals, and you may notice that this one is like five pages long, it's because I put everything in there. Anybody that goes and looks has no question about what the city council is actually doing. So the city manager, it doesn't even have to come back to council, the city manager is vested with the authority to move forward, and that will be staff's recommendation.
All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing on item B, and we will move to item C. Item C is pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. The Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 915 South McDonald Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, and owned by Jerry D. and Jennifer S. Knight, is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned as defined in 11OS Section 22-112.4(e). City Council shall make a determination as to whether said structure is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined in the referenced statutes, and whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of associated costs thereof to this owner of said property. Ms. Childs?
Thank you, mayor. Mrs. Knight, who is actually present, she and I have had a number of conversations about this particular structure. I think that she is prepared to tell you this evening that she has actually entered into a contract for a new roof. However, I spent a lot of time on the phone with her last week reviewing the photographs one by one and identifying for her the things that absolutely positively must be taken care of within the next 90 days. Just before the meeting today, they spoke with Code Officer Moore, you know, and I want to thank the code enforcement officers, they always work with citizens pretty diligently to assist them. I think that they even got a lot of work done today. So this is the same thing, the recommendation of staff will be, the resolution approves the amendment to the written official record, everything is in there, and we will of course recommend that you move forward, giving them a 90-day timeframe.
Counselors, any questions? I will open the public hearing at this point. The owners of the property.
Oh, my name is Jennifer Knight. We appreciate the chance, the 90 days, we think we can get it done. Next week, the new roof goes on, we cleared all the brush from around it, we can get this done in 90 days, and in about 30 days, we'll have him come back and tell us what we've missed, so.
Excellent. We appreciate that. Counselors, any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on the item? I'm going to close that public hearing as well. Beth Ann, did you have anything else to add at that point?
No, sir, I do not.
We'll move to item D, pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. The Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 2110 West Sherwood, Stillwater, Oklahoma, and owned by Maria Det Saxon, is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned as defined in 11OS Section 22-112.4(e). The City Council shall make a determination as to whether said building is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined by the referenced statutes, and whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of all associated costs thereof to the owner of said property. Ms. Childs?
One thing that is a positive, if you take a look at the photograph, there was a pretty significant overgrowth here. It's my understanding, Code Officer Moore went by there today, and it has been mowed, and a lot of the greenery has been cut away, which is helpful. It does not, however, address all of the structural deficiencies. When he made contact with her a couple of weeks ago, she actually resides in Talaqua. My recollection is that this is a residence that was owned by her mom, who has since, I can't remember if she passed or if she's living in an assisted living facility, but regardless, she's the one responsible. Last year, she was spending quite a bit of time in Houston, and so that's why we thought it was pretty important to give her a little bit extra time. She indicated to Mr. Moore that she had entered into a contract for sale, we haven't been able to verify that, but he did call County Land Records today, and they indicated that it had not been recorded. For that reason, we are recommending that you please move forward with declaring the structure a nuisance. This will be 90 days for demolition. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of this property? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and if there's nothing else, Ms. Childs, we'll move to the next item on the agenda.
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Officer Moore as well on your work on the code enforcement division. That takes us to item eight on the agenda, which is General Orders. Item 8A is consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the fiscal year 2025 agreement with the Stillwater Museum Association. Kristi Driscoll's here.
Good evening, mayor and councilor, Kristi Driscoll, Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director. I'm here tonight on behalf of the longstanding partnership that we have with the Stillwater History Museum at Sherar. We have a relationship and agreement with the Stillwater Museum Association, Incorporated, to collect, study, preserve, and communicate about a collection of documents, photographs, artifacts, and other items which show the material culture of Stillwater, Oklahoma, and its history. As part of that agreement, the City of Stillwater has paid $15,000 per year from 2007 to 2021. In '22 and '23, the City of Stillwater paid $30,000 per year for capital upgrades to the History Museum at the Sherar, and support of the museum to provide public education and to promote economic development by providing an attraction for tourists with exhibits, records, and artifacts. You'll notice tonight that this topic is split into two agenda items. First up on the agenda is the consider annual allocation of funds in the amount of $30,000 to the Stillwater Museum Association in support of the public education and preservation of documents, photographs, artifacts, and other items. This is a renewal from an agreement placed last year. Their requested $30,000 is included in the fiscal year 25 proposed budgets with funds available. Candace Robinson, President of the Association, and Debbie Williams, Program Coordinator, are both present if there are any questions.
Counselors, any questions?
Staff does have a recommended motion, is to approve the agreement with the Stillwater Museum Association, Incorporated, in the budgeted amount of $30,000.
Thank you, Kristi. Counselors, comments? Recommended action?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that agreement is approved, and I'll just say, that's a great thing, we appreciate the work that the Museum Association does in preserving and presenting the history of our community. It's a vital function really for our community to have that history on display, and the exhibits we've had over the last several years, there've been some really, really cool and interesting and helpful actually presentations on what's happened in Stillwater in the past so that we can actually use that as we go forward and learn from it, and so we appreciate the work that the museum does.
Absolutely, thank you.
Item B, consideration and discussion of possible action on Stillwater Museum Association's request for a one-time capital investment in the amount of $20,000 to support renovations to the museum building.
So this is part two of this year's request. As noted in their request, the Stillwater History Museum at Sherar recently underwent renovations. They are requesting assistance of a $20,000 to support the renovations. So tonight, we're here to consider the one-time increase in compensation of an additional $20,000 to support the recent renovation project. The additional $20,000 request would require funds to be identified and reallocated toward this project, and an amendment could be brought back for council's approval. If funds are approved, staff would review facility maintenance budgets of current city facilities and/or department and division operating budgets for fund reallocation to this item. They are both still here available, or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, questions?
As I understand it, if we were to agree to do this, we would have to pull $20,000 from somewhere else in the budget, whether it's maintenance for our own facilities or whatever, this is an unbudgeted request.
Correct. It is not included in the proposed FY '25 budget.
And just as a clarification for folks who maybe don't know the history or the relationship here, the facility, the Sherar Museum itself, is not a city-owned facility?
Correct.
So I'm, I was just going to make a couple of comments about this, I mean, I want to be able to support this, I mean, I think that, I think the, I think this is something that the city should and can at some level invest in, not just this facility, but programs like this or projects like this, and we have a number of facilities around the community that are either sort of city-owned or not really city-owned, but serve an important purpose in the community, that it would be nice for us to be able to make these kinds of contributions to, to support. Given that we don't have a particular program that does that right now, it's difficult to, I think, create just sort of a one-off spending amount in, you know, for this request. I would like to see if it's possible for the city to find $50,000 or $100,000 or somewhere in that range to create a yearly grant program that funds like this could be granted out of, if we can find that in the upcoming fiscal year's budget, and we actually create a program that's designed to do something like this specifically for structures and for uses that are not city facilities, that are not city programs, but are again important to the community, and then we could do like an application program for that grant funding, or we could, I don't know, we could do it through something. But I think we would need to have an established program to be able to do that, rather than just sort of expecting people to come as, I mean, there are, I'm sure, other entities in the city who would like to come and ask for a capital contribution for their projects as well, and so I prefer that we have some kind of structure set up to do that, rather than doing it on a one-off basis.
I agree, mayor, I think it would help not only us plan ahead and budget, but also the entities that might require this funding. It's unfortunate, right, that it just wasn't in maybe the budget cycle of the right time to ask potentially, or that we didn't have something like that. I'm just curious, as I was thinking about where this property is, is it, do we know what the renovations are, and would they maybe include facade, and could they potentially access?
I'll invite Candace up to speak.
Yeah.
Hi, yeah, we are just right down the street on Duncan, and we have, over the last couple of years, we installed a butterfly and then a garden in the front, so that has been done in the recent years. These renovations were to the inside of the building, the building's nearly 100 years old, and so carpet, paint, new exhibits, like totally new exhibits, which has not been done in, it'll be many years. It's our 50th anniversary this year, and so we thought it was well overdue to do a lot of those things, and so that's where, we got grants for most of it, about $52,000 in grants. A couple of those grants came shorter than we expected, and so that's kind of where our shortfall is, and a 45-year-old, I can't believe it lasted this long, HVAC system has recently gone out, so that's just another impact to our budget for that. So I don't know how it, if many of you are familiar with how it works usually, as far as our agreement, we send in to the council or to the city mayor or manager, excuse me, our report, and then with the request to continue our funding and our agreement, and so that's when we made the ask, just to see if it was possible, and we totally respect whatever decisions that you make, so we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
I agree with the mayor's comments as well, and I would love for us to be able to do this, but at a time we're trying to figure out how to repair the city pool, and I think it's a bigger priority for us right now than this kind of request.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask staff at this point to see what we can do to maybe put some fundings together, that we can then make those kind of priority decisions on some of this stuff, and then see what possible, you know, assistance we might be able to provide at some point in the future.
Absolutely.
Do we need a motion of some kind on that item?
Yes, in order for a motion to support all of these comments, I would be looking for a motion to deny the request.
Okay. Counselors?
So moved.
Second.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read that as a motion to deny the request and to ask staff to figure out a possible solution to the issue. So with that motion and second, counselors, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that motion passes. Thank you again for the work that you do, and it is certainly important, I think, to our community, and we're going to hopefully figure out ways to help. Takes us to item nine, Resolutions. 9A is Resolution CC-2024-12, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the secondary structure located at 915 South McDonald Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112. As we discussed in public hearing, this would be a 90-day delay on this until the city manager would have authority to act. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2024-12.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. 9B is a Resolution CC-2024-13, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 638 East 14th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112. Same 90-day delay on this one as well. Counselors?
I move adoption of Resolution CC-2024-13.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Item C is Resolution 2024-14, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 2110 West Sherwood Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112. Same comments on this one, counselors?
Motion to adopt CC-2024-14.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Item D, 9D, is Resolution Number CC-2024-15. This is a resolution declaring the eligibility of the city of Stillwater to submit an application to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for use of transportation alternatives program funds set forth by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act for the second phase of the Rails to Trails Project from McElroy Road to Sixth Avenue. Assures sufficient funding for the operation and maintenance of the life of the project. Assures that the city of Stillwater will have title or permanent easement for the project by the time the project letting. Authorizing the mayor or vice mayor to sign the grant application and any related documents necessary to secure funding and complete the project, and approving a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the required local match. Mr. Moore, tell us more.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This resolution authorizes the city of Stillwater to submit an application to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program. As you'll recall, in 2022, the city applied for this same grant program, and in 2023 was awarded the $1.2 million for the first phase of the Stillwater Rails to Trails Project, which will extend from Lakeview to McElroy in the unused rail corridor. This resolution authorizes us to apply for this, the federal monies available for the purpose of creating and promoting the planning and development of an active transportation facility and programs in Oklahoma. The application will be for the second phase of the Rails to Trails Project that will connect McElroy Road to the Sixth Avenue corridor with a one-mile ADA-compliant hard-surface trail. This is the second phase of a three-phase plan to connect our Cameoka Trail System here in Stillwater, which is really exciting, finally connect, you know, Boomer Lake all the way to Couch Park. The new connected trail will promote a healthy lifestyle of walking, running, and cycling, but will, more importantly, provide more people who rely on or choose to use alternative means for transportation, the opportunity for a safe, safely travel north and south through Stillwater, which can be a challenge. The total project cost is estimated at $1.5 million, which includes a $300,000 cost share for the city, with the, again, the prospective award amount of $1.2 million for this phase as well. The required 20% match funds have been identified in the transportation sales tax fund, and the budget amendment is included.
Thank you, Brittany. Counselors, any questions?
Just curious, I know the item mentions that we're waiting on the rail abandonment for construction for Phase One. Do we have any type of timeline as to where we are on that?
So, the state has been a great partner with us in this program, and they have hired attorneys that are helping us walk through this process. We've got it all the way kind of bundled and ready for approval. They said sometimes that takes months, sometimes it takes years. And so, it's, it's one of those things we're staying on top of, and we appreciate ODOT and their attorneys helping us through this legal process. But once it's done, then we can really get to work. And our notice to proceed, I believe, came for the engineering work, so, on the first phase. That's really exciting.
And do we foresee any issues? I know the resolution talks about having title on permanent easements for the project at the time of the project letting. Do we have any concerns with being able to accomplish that?
No, that's a great question. Through the rail banking process, the easements, the right-of-way will still remain with the state of Oklahoma, as it does now, and then we will become the trail manager with all the access to that corridor.
Thank you.
And there's no concern about, usually with grants, you gotta use the money in a certain amount of time. I guess we're, everybody understands that we're all just waiting on the federal part of this to actually abandon the trail?
Yes, we have, we've established a really good relationship, Shelley and I, with the program managers at ODOT, and Matt assured us, we asked that specific question about, you know, because we are waiting on this legal process, is there a restriction on many of these funds? They said we will absolutely accommodate and move back those timelines to make sure the project happens.
Excellent. Yep. It's exciting. I know there was a, the notice of abandonment was published in the newspaper a couple of months ago, so it's definitely moving, but somewhat of an opaque process.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we just gotta be patient, but we are pushing forward.
Excellent. For the questions, counselors, or action on the resolution?
Go ahead. Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2024-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Takes us to item E, which is another resolution, CC-2024-16, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council authorizing and approving the submission of an application for fiscal year 2024 bipartisan infrastructure law airport terminal program, airport infrastructure grant funds, and airport improvement program entitlement and discretionary funds administered by the Federal Aviation Administration for airport infrastructure improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport, and approving the associated budget amendments for the required sponsor match. Kelly Reed is here to tell us a little bit more about this one.
If I may, Mayor and Counsel, there's a couple of verbal amendments to the resolution that I need to make, so I'll just give a brief introduction and then let Kelly answer any questions. So, the resolution does authorize the city to apply for fiscal year 2024 FAA funds for airport terminals program grant funds, airport infrastructure grant funds, and airport improvement program entitlement and discretionary funds for infrastructure improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport. Further down in the resolution, Paragraphes seven and eight, we determine that there is, the numbers need to be changed. So, it should read, "The anticipated cost share under fiscal year 2024 FAA grants are as follows: Federal Aviation Administration, $13,322,247, including $4.5 million ATP, AIG, $1.3 million 538, AIP, $7,521,709, and City of Stillwater Sponsor Match, $1,217,092. That includes ATP, $236,842, and AIG, $144,504, and AIP, $835,745." The for, the Resolution Number CC-2023-33 authorized appropriation of $322,957 of city match funding, which is applied to Phase One of City of Stillwater Sponsor Match needed of the $1.2, excuse me, $1,217,092. So, the resolution will authorize submission of an FAA grant application for fiscal year 2024 FAA funds in an amount not to exceed $13,322,247 in payment of matching funds, and also seeks authorization to approve budget amendments in the amount of $894,135 to appropriate remaining funds for the required sponsor match. The second attached budget amendment has been revised. The second line item reflecting the city match has been revised to $835,745. I have a corrected budget amendment here for anybody that would like to review it, but this is just to account for the previous action taken by city council in a prior resolution where we had already appropriated the city's match funds. And with that, Airport Director Kelly Reed is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors, and Deputy City Manager Moore. That was a lot of numbers. Thank you. You saved me a lot of breath. I thought I would just give you overview of what we're trying to accomplish here. So, this is in support of what we're basically calling Phase One of the terminal project to begin construction later this summer. So, our construction manager at risk has been working really hard with our architecture and planning team for the terminal to identify cost reductions, cost savings, and ways that we can eliminate nonessential items and bring the cost down a little bit. So, we did that going into final design. The bids did come in under our estimated amount for this project, which was around $20 million. Noted in the resolution, the CMAR bid recommendation came in at $18,592,300. So, that's for the terminal, the new terminal, the four-lane drop-off, and some existing terminal parking lot improvements and apron improvements. So, it's the biggest chunk of the project. We still have two years remaining, so this is a request to, for consideration to apply for the FAA funding to cover our requests for this year. I will say the FAA has been an extraordinary partner with us in this, going into it, seeing the work that the city put into the terminal, seeing the development and increase in air service that we've had over the last several years, and really just bringing a big commitment to Stillwater. So, it's exciting to see from my, from my position, they brought forward $6 million in discretionary funding before we even kicked us off, invited us to apply for that ATP Airport Terminal Program loan, or grant, not loan, that we were successful in $4.5 million of. So, the, between the three grants mentioned, the ATP, the airport infrastructure grants, and then the annual entitlements that we receive because we have commercial service and that additional discretionary funding are the three pools of money that we're requesting to apply for this week. Are there any questions? We do have our architect here and the CMAR, if there's any questions for our team.
Did I hear you say actually came in under budget?
We did. We did, through a lot of diligent effort from our team. I'm very grateful.
So, if all this is awarded, all the pools of money that we're looking for coming in, what's our total sort of funding that we're providing from the city for the project?
Our match is what Attorney currently mentioned, 1.2, a little over 1.2 million. And then, additional to that, we have, that's our match for the city grants, but because we're building a terminal, there's ineligible spaces that are not eligible for federal funding. So, those are spaces that we're gonna rent out or lease out to airlines, TSA, concessionaires, anything that could be revenue generating. And so, our match for that, or our ineligible share, is $3,282,961. So, the total city match for, the total city share for this year is $4,443,042.
And for that, we get a $20 million terminal?
$24 million terminal with all the pieces and other additions. We have a, we're planning a passenger boarding bridge, new parking, two gates as opposed to the one gate that we have now. We currently operate out of 7,000 square feet, so when we have a full flight of 65 people at standing room only, the new terminal will give us two gates and is a little over 31,000 feet, a little under what our master plan recommendation is of 32,000 feet, for both supporting our existing service and continuing to grow.
Sounds like a fantastic deal. Really appreciate all the work that you guys have done, the architecture team, and the CMAR, and of course, you and your staff. This is a tremendous project and really a, I mean, a game changer for 40 years of, you know, the life of the city and our ability to continue to expand economic development and all the other things that we do. So, really great work, and we appreciate everything that you guys have put into it.
I travel often for work, and I get to visit a lot of airports, and I'm reminded every time I go to a new airport just how important airports are as the gateways to our communities and places that we're traveling from or to. So, it's, I'm so grateful for the work and effort that the team has put together. It really is transformational for our community to have this space and all the effort that's been put into it.
In fact, this week, we have people from all over the country and all over the world in town for the NCAA Tennis Championships, and I'm sure many of them have flown in through the airport. I talked to a couple from Switzerland that were here, and folks from Virginia and California. So, I mean, this kind of project is exactly what allows us to be able to continue to have those kinds of events as well, so. Further comments, questions, action on the resolution?
I move approval of Resolution CC-2024-16.
Second.
With a motion and a second.
Before we vote, I'm recommending amending the motion for approval to approve Resolution CC-2024-16 as amended by the city attorney.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as amended by the city attorney. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution as amended is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to reports from officers and boards and see if, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
I'm done talking.
So, it's tough when you gotta read those real long things, isn't it? It's not so easy. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Stillwater Art Integration has developed the community's first utility box art program. This is a beautification, art inclusion, and graffiti abatement initiative. The contest is open to all students from Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology, Oklahoma State University, and Northern Oklahoma College, really any students. The submission period is from Monday, May 20th to Thursday, August 15th at 5:30 PM. So, there's a sharp cutoff on August 15th. Artists will be recognized for their artwork but will not be paid for their project. This year's artwork theme is "It's Electric" to celebrate and educate the community on the importance of electricity and energy-saving efforts. The top 10 artwork submissions will be determined by the Stillwater Art Integration Council and then be placed online for community members to vote and determine the top six. The artwork will be installed on select utility boxes this fall. More information, go to stillwaterok.gov art. And I also just want to give thanks to Dawn. She's done an awesome job leading this initiative with the Stillwater Art Integration, and I think this is gonna be a really neat program. We've had a lot of positive feedback already.
I am, I don't know if the rest of you have been around here long enough to remember when the Hideaway used to have a contest to paint their delivery Volkswagen Beetles? Anybody else remember this? You used to be able to do this? You remember this? My brother actually won that one year. It was fantastic. But this reminded me of that, like, the first time I saw it, it was like, because that was a big deal back in the day. Like, you had to color, you know, the beetle, and then they picked one, and then they painted the beetle, the design. This is, I mean, it's gonna be really cool. For a student who, you know, has the opportunity to have their art selected, it's gonna be up on an electric box out for everybody to see and have that recognition. So, I'm super excited about this project. I really appreciate the work that you've done, Dawn, and the team, on getting this together. And it'll be a busy summer of artwork for our students in Stillwater.
If I can make a quick comment, I've had three people reach out and say, "What about the box in my neighborhood?" I mean, they already want to get more done, so there's excitement about this. It's really cool.
That's great. Really exciting. So, when do they open?
Opens Monday, May 20th.
That's today.
Yeah, and Thursday, closes, yeah, closes Thursday, August 15th at 5:30 sharp.
So, you've got all summer. Is there a, like, do you have to go get a template somewhere, or how do you know what you're supposed to design?
I'm sure the details are online, yes, and...
It has like the sizes in, and it'll be adjusted to fit your size.
Stillwaterok.gov art. Cool. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
We have two splash pads in Stillwater, one at Boomer Lake Park and the other at Southern Woods. Both will be open on May 23rd. They are open daily from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The free splash pads are closed only during times of inclement weather or maintenance. So, we're just talking about how it's warming up. This will be an opportunity to go cool off, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
Save the date and celebrate Independence Day with Stillwater's 30th Boomer Blast Firework Show on Thursday, July 4th at Boomer Lake Park. Festivities will kick off at 6:30 PM with food trucks, music, and more. The firework show will begin around 9:30 PM. The city will continue to share event details on social media and online at stillwaterok.gov/boomerblast.
Always a fantastic time.
Always a great time.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Fly day food trucks are back at Stillwater Regional Airport. Join us at the old OSU Flight Center, 1818 Wright Drive, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the second Friday of each month. We will have fly days beginning June 14th and continuing through October 11th. This year, diners will have the opportunity to experience airside dining located within the fence. Fly day food trucks, it's what's for lunch.
Well done. Counselor Harden?
City Hall will be closed Memorial Day, Monday, May 27th. Let's take this time to honor all who served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. Please remember that trash and recycling will be picked up as normal on that Monday.
Thank you. And I'll let you know that Stillwater Community United has again organized our annual Juneteenth celebration. We'll be at Southern Woods Park on Saturday, June 15th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All community members are invited to gather for games, music, free food and drinks, and entertainment for the whole family. For more information about the event, go to visitstillwater.org/SWOCommunityUnited. Also, City Hall will be closed in observance of Juneteenth on Wednesday, June 19th. Trash and recycling will be collected as usual, but not yard waste. I also want to throw in a quick thank you to the group of folks who went out and did some trail cleanup for the Cameoka Trail, went out and trimmed branches back, and did some, just some maintenance to make sure that our existing portions of the Cameoka Trail are passable and clean and... existing portions of the Cameoka Trail are, are passable and clean and, and nice. So Scott Nutt, the Marret family, Joseph Garza, and Chris Peters, I know were part of that team. I think there were some others that, that went out there and did that, but just out on their own time cleaning up the trail. We really, really appreciate their work there. Any que, any more questions from the council, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the city council, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for May 20th, 2024. Pretty quick agenda here tonight. Counsel, excuse me, trustees, questions, comments, or a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Any questions, comments, or reports from the trustees or the officers? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.